And welcome to the February 11th Meeting of the Council. If the city clerk, please take the roll.
Sure. Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Your move hour is excused absent. Esslinger?
Here.
Flohm?
Here.
Bulow?
Here.
And councilmember Stevenson is absent. Thank you. We have five present.
Excellent. Thank you. Leading us in the invocation tonight will be councilmember Nichols.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
Thank you. And we have a couple students from Trinity Lutheran that are going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Lydia and Aviva for helping us out here tonight. And like I said, you get a chance to call out maybe your favorite subject, your favorite teacher, or if there's just a class you need extra credit in.
My favorite teacher would be Mr. Ryan. And my favorite class would probably be history.
My favorite teacher would be Mr. Ryan. And my favorite class would probably be art.
Art and history. Fantastic. All right. Thank you guys for helping us out tonight. If you want to. Next up, we have introduction of staff for Mr. Stelter, interim fire chief.
All right. Thanks, deputy mayor. You know, I'm very pleased to introduce Greg Stelter. I've known him for many, many years. He's current, he was prior to his interim assignment, our assistant chief. He was promoted at position 2022. He started with the fire department in 1997. He's been, he's done just about everything for the department. He's acted in the capacity of a chief officer, lieutenant, equipment operator, firefighter, He's been to the National Fire Academy. And, you know, I got to know him pretty, in a pretty detailed manner when he was president of the fire union. And we worked together on a variety of collective bargaining agreements. And, you know, I've always found him to be very practical. I know he's very well respected from people that work inside the department and other departments. So we're very fortunate that he accepted this temporary assignment. And we're very pleased the police and fire commission approved him. So with that, Greg, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah. Good evening to the councilmembers and deputy mayor. I've met many of you, but I'd like to thank John for his formal invitation. That's a pretty exciting position to be in. If you have any questions or anything I can help you with, please not hesitate to reach out to me. Councilmember Flohm, I did receive your email. We'll be getting you some answers on that subject as soon as we can. So thank you for the chance to get up here and speak.
Well, welcome and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll have citizen statements to council. I do have four people registered. So go in in order. The first up will be our representative Lori Palmieri, please, followed by Mr. Faust.
Well, good evening, councilmembers, and thank you so much to the council and the mayor for inviting me here as your state representative to come and speak. I come under citizen statements, just with some public service announcements. And I hope that I can get through them all in the time allotted. A lot of things have been going on recently, as you can understand. So a brief statement about constituent services. First of all, for those watching from home, I am State Representative Lori Palmieri, representing the 54th Assembly District, which covers a significant portion of the city. This 107th legislative session, I am serving on the following assembly committees. I'm the ranking minority member on environment and also on forestry, park, and rec. And I'm also now on the committee for local government, as well as the Wisconsin Forestry Council. So I just want to share a few brief comments before I get into the announcements related to district impact by recent federal government activities, which could impact state or city services. There's been a lot of confusion and many calls, as you can imagine, in the last few weeks. We are collecting concerns to share at the state level and trying to direct folks to the right place for answers specific to their needs. Please be aware that we are limited to state-specific program assistance, and we are in contact with federal legislators. It is best to reach out to your federal representatives, although we are, as I said, absolutely responding, and share your concerns specifically. Additionally, there's currently daily litigation for states about activities at the federal level, programs like Medicare, Head Start, financial aid for college, as well as agencies for, like the Departments of Education and Treasury governed at the federal level. What I can do and will continue to do is work with those federal counterparts and uplift the voices of constituents and stakeholders who are sounding alarm bells about how these decisions impact them. You can reach out and voice your concern. We have posted on our Facebook page, Instagram, LinkedIn, and you can certainly call the office for contact information of the Wisconsin congressional delegation from our district and how to reach them. Please know that, again, I will represent and advocate tirelessly for your rights and freedoms here in Wisconsin. Our state legislature is forming federal-issue work groups for tracking and organizing activities. If you have a personal story of someone who's impacted by these policies, including city or county infrastructure or programs, we have a special link that those can be directed and uploaded to and shared for use publicly. Okay. Now into announcements. First of all, this is specific to the city council. There will be a Fox Valley Joint Finance Committee Roundtable Discussion on March 3rd. So you're going to need to look for that email invite. It is an invite-only event, so keep an eye out for that 11:00 a.m. March 3rd to 1:00 p.m. at the New Appleton Public Library. There will be members from the Joint Finance Committee there. Second announcement to tune in to Governor Evers' state budget address. That is February 18th at 7:00 p.m. It can also be viewed live at wisseye.org. That is a free subscription if you sign up. Also, I wanted to let you know that I have regular office hours here in the district, and we are expanding those. Previously, it was monthly at the Senior Center. We are now adding in the library, NUW Oshkosh, for February 21st. Oshkosh Public Library from 10:00 to noon, and then Oshkosh Senior Center from 1:00 to 3:00. Again, that's February 21st. Now, we will also be holding an in-district budget listening session at the Oshkosh Public Library on May 5th. That's Oshkosh Public Library Room A-B, 4:30 to 6:30. And then there are also going to be some in-person regional budget listening sessions that are hosted by Joint Finance, and they are open to the public. There are usually about four or five different locations across the state. Members of the public can attend the hearing in person and provide testimony on which budget priorities they support or oppose. I want to give this email address for folks who cannot attend in person, and that's budget.coments@legis.wisconsin.gov. And I'll share this with Diane later, too. So again, anyone who cannot attend in person is also welcome to provide that via email. So this budget process is somewhat lengthy. It will be kicked off again February 18th. That is by the executive branch. It will then move into the legislative branch, our Joint Finance Committee. They're going to do some tinkering around, and usually by the first week or so in July is when that budget is finalized. So I just wanted to share that process. And then one more thing, if you didn't catch all of that, you can sign up for a legislative email update, and that's at rep.palmieri@legis.wisconsin.gov. We will be sending out updates on all of the budget listening sessions occurring in district and around the state. And then finally, I just wanted to thank councilmembers Esslinger and Flohm for inviting me to their listening session this week, and those residents that attended to give their input. I'm sorry that we missed Representative Gustafson. I do look forward to the legislative roundtable later this spring. That will be opened up to more of the state representatives. In the meantime, if you have any questions or want to reach out, want to meet individually, you can reach our office at 608-237-9154. And that's all I have tonight. Did I make it in five minutes?
Not quite, but I'm glad you did not make me cut you off.
Thank you. Thank you for the courtesy.
Of course.
All right.
Thank you for the updates. All right. Mr. Stephen Faust, followed by Wyatt Gleisner.
Oh, I'd like to address the council on a plumbing code. The number is Chapter 20-8-C, Paragraph 2, in plain English. It has to do with the private water hookups. When this was passed is exactly 20 years after the state Supreme Court ruled that anyone with a well has the right to keep that well forever. 20 years later, before they started, the city started to expand to the western direction, the code made sense that if there were people in the city of Oshkosh that had a well, they would have to hook up the city water, because most of wells east of Main Street are like 30, 40 feet deep and are getting polluted. As you go out to the west, and now in that Algoma area, our wells are in the neighborhood of 160 feet to 210 feet. The code requires us to hook up to the lateral that's inside our lot line, pull it into our basement, and cap it. This is another form of wasteful spending by governments, but unfortunately, in this case, it's on the citizens. There are going to be over 100 homes that we're next who are not hooking up to the city water. If you look at that, my estimate, because I am the closest person to the road of anybody involved in this, my estimate is over $6,000, and that does not include sidewalk repair, landscape repair. If you take that $6,000 times, say, 100 residents, you've got $600,000 of wasteful spending. The town of Oshkosh, the city of Oshkosh, excuse me, probably has a maximum propensity to consume something in the neighborhood of 98% to 102%, which means everybody in this town spends basically their entire check or slightly overcheck, which means they're going in debt. If this $600,000 were put to a better use, it would multiply four times in our economy. So you've got almost $250,000 of economic activity that would go to the local dealers, stores, whatever the case is, restaurants. It's money that's wasted on this project, and it could be spent in a better way. Big thing is that some person in some department convinced somebody in another department that it's cheaper to do it now than it will be later. Excavators are all over the place. They're not unionized. They do not get together and quote projects. It's not going to cost any more today in today's dollar as if it's done 25 years from now. They're not the auto-unions that get 25% raises. So the thing is, it's an expense, unnecessary expense to all these households. If it comes necessary for someone to hook up to this system, they're not touching city property. They're not in anybody's right-of-way. They're on private property the entire time. They can dig it in, hook it up anytime they want, and it does not affect anybody else involved. So I'm asking you to look at this because it's an outdated or it should be modified to adjust for people who are not going to use the system. Why do it today? Some departments, the plumbing department will tell you, well, you can dig it in the same trench. That state code has city water and city sewer six-foot separation, whether it's horizontal, vertical, any way you want. And if it gets where the sewage line is above the water line, the separation is more important, because that's where you get your failures from. Can I answer any questions? I thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Wyatt Gleisner, followed by Matt Mickelson.
Good evening, guys. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Obviously, it's pretty interesting to see a 25-year-old come here, talk to you guys tonight. You don't see that every day, but pretty passionate about this. So with the parking, that's become a big issue, especially in people that I know personally downtown. It's really caused a lot of problems. Business owners, they have to have, their employees are getting tickets, but they've got to move every two hours. Doesn't really make sense if they're there all day, they move their car every two hours. Sure, you can get parking passes for those businesses, but still, it's not really that fair to them. I mean, they've got to spend money on that, even for regular people that want to visit downtown. We went downtown Oshkosh this past weekend. You look at all the parking down there, well, this parking lot, can you park in it? Oh, it's toll zone, can't, oh, private property. Look down on Main Street, there's like no spots open, or if you're there, it's not the correct time zone. And even residents, people that live in the residential areas in Oshkosh, it's no more alternative side parking, which, I love that. Think about it now, I love that rule. I'm not saying there should be no alternative parking in general, but having no parking on either side, it's really hard for people that live in apartments, or they live in a house with four of their roommates. It's hard with a small driveway, where are they going to park, you know? And they're going to get taken every time. And it's just really hard nowadays with just the parking. The only thing I can say about that is please just bring back alternative parking. It made things a lot more simple. We obey those rules, but going to no parking and having all these parking permits, it just confuses things. It kind of contradicts a little bit. So all I ask is please look at that and consider it for the people that live in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Matt, bring us home.
Thank you. Actually, same topic as Wyatt and I were on a Facebook post together. Couple things. I once got a ticket because I decided to go to work early at 4:45 a.m. And for 15 minutes, I walked out later that morning and felt like, oh, the city got me. Gotcha, right? For going to work early. So it's frustrating. This is on Oregon Street, where there's nobody else out there parking. My question comes down to what's the purpose of actually having the overnight ban? So one of the answers I heard was the, you know, snow ban. Well, explain the summer, then. I know this is Wisconsin, but come on. The other thing that I learned, Paul was telling me about the phosphorus in the water and when the street sweepers go out. And I was like, wait, street sweepers go out at night? Mr. Robbie was telling me that in the more commercial areas, they do, or industrial areas, they do. But if I'm understanding correctly, not in the residential areas. So I get it downtown because there's not as many people down there, but what about the residential areas? One of the rentals that I have does not have a speck of asphalt on it. There's no parking on it. My tenant is required to have a parking permit to park on the street. I ante up for that, but sometimes I'm like, what am I paying for? I already pay property taxes, which goes out into the middle of the street, if I understand my deed correctly. Why am I getting dinged with an additional expense? What's the value that I'm getting for it? So I hope you guys would take some time to consider removing those additional fees, and also, you know, is it really so bad to park on the street? Doesn't our police force have some other things that are better to be doing in the middle of the night? So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak under citizen statements that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to this consent agenda. Can I get a motion in a second?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe some people had some questions and comments on it? Go ahead.
Thanks. I just want to acknowledge that item number 13 is an investigation, a contract for investigation of the 7th Ave project. And so I'm really glad that we're doing that, and we got here, and I appreciate the city for getting there. That's government at work was slow, which is also the government at work, and so I acknowledge that. But the fact that those citizens reached out to staff and then council, and then we're actually going to see progress here is a good thing. Want to acknowledge that.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Larson.
I had a question on that one as well. I mean, I know that addresses it pretty well. I don't know if we need more up here, but I noticed that 7th Street wasn't on this agenda, and we had been talking about it on every time. James, is there more to add, or is there not more to add? I mean, if that's all there is, that's fine, and I equally appreciate it as much as DJ did. I think it's great to see the progress, but I didn't know if there was any more to say, so I thought I would ask. I'm sorry to call you up from way back there.
Nope. That's right. I apologize. I missed the start of that conversation as Mr. Mickelson was asking me a question on the way out the door. So if you could kind of start that over for me.
I was just hoping that there was a little bit more fidelity on that in general, what's happening with 7th Street with the Culver investigation. This is the next step in what we've been talking about on an ongoing basis, I think, right?
Yeah. So the agreement that's on consent agenda is an agreement with Ramble, Americas, to start working on an investigation with that. They have, our staff have already met with them to get that project kicked off, and they will be starting that work here real shortly. One of the subconsultants is planning on being on-site later this month to start that investigation. So we are working towards trying to figure out what is going on in that area, and this is kind of that first step of getting that investigation done to help us understand it better.
Great. So we'll get updates on this going forward, as we were on 7th Street previously, yes?
Yeah. It's going to take them a couple of weeks to do their initial data gathering and then digest it. So looking at the information I got from engineering staff, you know, they're not expecting a full report until probably early April at this point, but they will be out there getting some work done later in February.
Councilmember Flohm.
Thank you, Director Robbie. One of the things that I would just ask is that the residents of 7th Avenue just routinely updated about what's going on with us. So as Ramble gets in there and starts to do their investigation, that just the residents are apprised of the final report specifically and just what they may be doing around their properties as well, because I know that they're still rather anxious. The ground is frozen right now, so there may not be as much seepage, but once we get into the thaw, definitely there will be. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the progress update.
And councilmember Larson.
I had more, not for this one, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have more on this one? I just had a point of clarification for Lynn or Diane, maybe on 182555. I'm all for it. That's the surrender of license. I'm voting yes. I think it's fantastic. But some fidelity on whether those licenses belong to the business or to the building, because we've had that discussion a couple of different ways lately. And this is from, correct me if I'm wrong, this is from building owner to business owner. And I think that's great. I just want to make sure that if we're going to keep doing this kind of thing, we need to be clear about what the license is attached to, right?
Right. My understanding is business to business.
Correct. That's not this.
Licenses are issued to an applicant, to a person, an entity. And an entity can be a person. So you could have a corporation that is a person for purposes of holding a license, but they're issued to the individual for use at a specific property. In this case, the individual who was, or business that was holding the property, sold their business.
Yep.
In most cases, like you've noted, they tend to pass the license to the person who buys their property. In this case, that didn't happen. They're conditionally surrendering it to another.
Yep.
Person that is at a different location.
I think that's great. I just want to make sure that we're all being clear about what, because when we revoke one from someone, it's from the physical property, not the business, because it gets abandoned by the business, stays with the property until it's not used, and then council can revoke it and take it back and issue it to somebody else.
No, it's always held by a person or an entity, and we revoke it for them.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
But just, you see where I'm getting at. I just want to make sure, because we're going from a building to a business, and that's okay, too. When it comes back and we're talking about zoning, we need to be able to reiterate this as well, because if we're going to talk about zoning that applies to these licenses, that's a physical property, not a person or an entity.
Can I ask a question?
It's for difference.
Can I just ask a question?
I just want to make sure that this is.
That might be clarifying?
Yes.
So the building owner is an entity, and the business is an entity, and that's the transfer. So it's not the address that it's issued to.
Correct. It's not the physical property that holds a license. It's the.
And that's good.
The corporation or the individual.
That works for me, and now we know for next time what it is, and that's perfect. So it's a great answer, and that's, as I understand it as well. I was just confused by it the last time it came up. So I'm sorry to muddy the waters with it, but that's great. Thank you. And I love the idea of it. So that's awesome.
All right. I just have a couple really quick call-outs. The first one is on item three. For people that don't typically read the agendas, the 2024 donations report, last year, because of the public-private partnerships and major gifts, including from the city, from the foundation, over $1 million was donated to the city through these partnerships. And without that, a lot of things couldn't happen. So I wanted to thank our city staff, the donors, the foundation, and everybody that makes it happen, because that is something that we budget for, because we're able to. But the city couldn't do everything it needs to do without those wonderful donations. So thank you. And then the other one is item number 1225-49. As Fitzpatrick is soon to be once and again and again and again, former interim city manager, just wanted to say a quick thank you to you, everything that you've done to help us through this time period, not only stepping in, but also through the search. We're all excited to see Rebecca grill up here in the next meeting. I'll only speak for myself, but I felt as if there was minimal disruption or slowdown with you driving the wagon, and very competently. So wanted to very much thank you for everything you did dealing with us over this interim period. And councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I have a question regarding item number nine, Resolution 2546. If I could ask a question with that?
Yes.
Okay. Attorney Lawrence, and help me with the, what we can and cannot do. I read over the analysis, the gentleman's letter in regards to the situation. Can the council, should we or should we not, can the council do anything with this assessment? Lower this assessment? Can we lower an assessment to match what the citizen is asking for?
You could partially allow his claim. That would have to be done by a different resolution. This resolution is for disalliance of the claim.
Okay. So if I'm correct, by disallowing the claim, that allows him to go to the next step would be to court, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And I understand that. And I understand that, I know that's the process, but in order to do that, I mean, what the reality is, he's going to have to get an attorney. Attorneys are what, $200, $300 an hour, court costs? And if I'm reading this right, the difference in what he believes the assessed value is and what we have is about $12,000, which in reality, in money terms, comes to about $100. I guess what I'm asking for is this guy went through all of this stuff, and I think during part of the process, if you read the letter that he wrote out, probably was not treated the best in certain circumstances. I would like to just lower this assessment and be done with this, so he doesn't have to go through all that. That's where I'd like to go.
I'll speak to that. I personally think that would be ill-advised. He followed the process that went through. This is the process to go to the board of review, went to the insurance. We got the recommendation to disallow. That allows him to do the next steps in it. I don't think that it's in council's purview to be deciding the assessment of each one. That's what we have the process for, but, you know, I definitely understand where you're coming from, but that's my opinion on it.
Yeah, I'm not asking if we can. I want to know what we can do. It could be the best decision in the world, the worst, what can we do? Mr. Larson, if you have a.
Yeah, Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I pressed the button.
Okay.
I was just waiting my turn.
All right.
And my question's the same, having not seen this one yet. If we vote no to disallowing the claim, does that allow his claim and then his assessment?
No, it does not.
Does it what?
It does not allow the claim.
Okay.
It just is that you're not disallowing it by this resolution.
So, what happens if we don't disallow it?
If we disallow it, you mean?
This is why I'm, it reads as if.
By operation of law, after 90 days, if you take no further action, it's deemed disallowed.
No, but if, I mean, my intent was to pull this so I could ask more questions than then vote on it. If we vote no to disallow the claim, what happens?
The resolution is voted down, but it does not allow the claim. The claim just sits out there. At the end of 90 days by law, it's deemed disallowed, and he could go to court.
So, essentially, the only thing that this thing does is expedite the disallowance.
It, yes.
That's it.
I mean, you could direct staff to bring it back for a partial allowance. I would recommend against that, but.
Before DJ goes, because he's going to get it right.
She said what I was going to say. What, I think what you're able to do is you're able to amend that item to allow it or partially allow it.
Okay, I'm more confused now.
Is that right? I mean, that's.
It's written as if we do the gentleman a favor by disallowing his claim.
No.
Okay, that's how I read it. See, now we're all confused.
Not all of us.
Go, go, do your thing.
I'm going to vote to disallow it. I'm not going to help you.
Yeah, I also think that we open ourselves up tremendously to a lot of claims. If we start going down the path of city council coming up here and investigating each and every assessment that went out, I do not think it's so wise, but you're welcome to make a motion to either pull it if you'd like to or to, you know.
I think it's too late.
Right now, it's still in the, you can still pull it at any time.
Yeah.
You could still.
Yeah. Interim City Manager Fitzpatrick.
Right, and I'm not trying to tell council what to do either. I'm just providing additional information, but along the lines of what Councilmember Nichols has said and also Deputy Mayor Builo, the other concern I would have, if you foray into the world of partially allowing, is the relationship that we have with insurance. So, if there's additional outcomes that are unforeseen right now, then we could lose the protection of our insurance, because we're going in a, going to a place that's outside the recommendation of this insurance that we purchased, that we asked for their guidance on. So, that's just something that I think is important for council to be aware of, if you, depending upon what you do decide.
If I can just add in, just, this was brought to the board of review. They're a citizen board that is appointed by council. They heard all of the information in regard to this. I understand Mr. Kraus is frustrated and, you know, didn't agree with that decision. He does have another alternative. He can go to court on it. He can decide if he wants to have an attorney at that, the same as at the board of review. At the board of review, he represented himself. He can do that at court as well, but the disallowance is really not intended. It's like any other claim. If we see an obvious error, and there have been times where I've come to council and said, please, we're recommending you allow or partially allow a claim. That's not what we're recommending on this one. We're recommending if he would like to have another hearing or to have someone else look at, that it go to court.
Lynn, that was my question to clarify. That's all I was trying to get at. I was trying to say it one way or another. That was what I was trying to get at. Some apologies if I phrased that poorly previously.
All right, is there any other debate or comments? Otherwise, I would call the question on consent if there's no. All right, seeing none, please take the roll on consent.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm making sure I've got all this ordered.
Yep, no problem.
Good, thank you, at five.
All right, thank you. All right, pending ordinances, ordinance 2557, amend section 1744 and 1744.2 of the Oshkosh City Municipal Cold pertaining to weed cutting and lawn care and native landscaping areas. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval. Motion second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Flo.
Thank you. Kelly, I know that Ray's not here, so I will just go ahead and ask you. So, in terms of, I see some housekeeping, just looking at the red line version of this, I see some housekeeping and then I see some other items here. I was able to briefly run through this, actually a number of times run through this, and I still have a couple of lingering questions, and that's for items one and two on page three. Number one, native plant areas do not include gardens, landscaping, beds, or foundation edging. So, if I understand this correctly, somebody just can't say, I'm going to have this be my entire lawn.
Correct.
Okay, so this is a designated area that has to be approved by the parks director.
Has to be a plan, yes.
There has to be a plan that's submitted and approved.
Correct.
Okay. That, and it can't exceed eight inches high, okay. That pretty much answers my question. I just wanted to double check that by you, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, please take the roll on 2557.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Carrie, five.
All right, ordinance 2558, approve zone change from urban mixed-use district to urban mis, mixed-use district, I can talk, with a planned development overlay at 536 Bayshore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. Motion second.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I did look over this situation, and you don't have to get up, Kelly. I'm not, I don't have any questions, this is more of a comment. This looks really neat. I mean, that area is, doesn't look the best in some areas, and I think the plans that they have here look fantastic, so I hope the best for them. If it's passed, which I hope it does, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Flo.
I just want to echo that and say, congrats, Tara. This looks excellent, and I wish you all the best.
I was actually lucky enough to tour the building for a different use before it was this, and I am so excited to see what you do with it, because the building had so much potential that was not being realized, and it's in such an amazing location. So, fantastic use, fantastic reuse of a building, so no issues for me. Anybody else? All right, please take the roll.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Carrie, five.
All right, new resolutions. 2559, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for personal and professional service use at 536 Bayshore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. Motion second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, take the roll.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Carrie, five.
Resolution 2560, approve professional services agreement with Matrix Consulting Group for an inspection, codes, permits, and fee review, and city development review process assessment for 1033940. Motion second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? I assume there were. Councilmember Nichols.
I support this completely. I think it's always good to review our codes, our processes. Over time, things change. We're in a much different world today than we were five years ago, so I think that's a good thing. I guess, Kelly, I do have one question. The memo indicates that it'll, on the agenda includes it'll be complete in July of 2025. The SOW and our contract says it'll be August of 2025. I guess I'm not concerned about that. I just want to make sure we figure out which it is, but in terms of that timing, it looked like in the SOW, they are willing to provide counsel with two, up to two presentations.
Yes.
I guess I'm hoping that we can go ahead and get that presentation scheduled.
Okay.
Is my goal, is that something that they're willing to do and that the staff is willing to do?
Yeah, we can absolutely schedule ahead.
Great, and then is the full report also going to be available to council?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Awesome, I think this is a good thing. Excellent. Councilmember Flo.
I just want to echo those comments. I am very excited about this. Taking a look, having a third party take a look at what we do with all due respect to city staff, I think is good. I think a fresh pair of eyes is always helpful. We heard an example of that tonight. The gentleman came, Mr. Faust came and had questions about wells, especially in newly annexed areas of the city. So, I think this is very germane for that topic as well, and so I'm eager to see what they come up with. I'd like to see them give a report to us and just a presentation as well, and happy to see them get started. I know a number of us, specifically Councilmember Larson, has been talking about this since even before he was elected, so it's great to see this happen, so thank you.
And on that subject, Councilmember Larson.
I was going to say, thank you. I read through it, it's awesome. I'm really excited about it, same way everybody else is. I'm glad it's finally here. This also makes my agenda item coming up on See Click Fix a lot easier, because some of that will go into this, and I appreciate the timing of it, so it'll save everybody listening to me talk, which will be helpful for all of us. It sounds like in reading through it, we will have some indication to give input as we go through this, right?
Absolutely.
And discuss which things happen places elsewhere that don't happen here or vice versa.
Yes.
So, I read it all, and it's really well put together, so good choice. Thank you for doing it, and I appreciate it.
Great, excellent.
All right, anybody else? All right, please take the roll.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Carrie, five.
All right, resolution 2561, approve combination Class B beer liquor license with Reserve One to El Camaderas Mexican Grill. Motion second.
Move it.
Second.
And discussion? Councilmember Larson.
I was, easy question, this is great. I'm very happy to see reserve license being used. I mentioned in email too, there are 10 and not nine. That made my whole week, because I fought hard to get nine. There might be 10. I should, sorry.
Don't get all excited. We have, we still have to, we still have to confirm that. We have a call into the state.
Okay.
Cheryl's out a couple of days this week, and.
Sounds great.
Yep.
Even well after I'm not on council, expect to show, see me show up here every time a reserve license is issued or discussed, just to talk about how great it is.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, please take the roll.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Carrie, five.
All right, on to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items, starting off with discussion from Councilmember Larson on See Click Fix, also known as Connect Oshkosh.
Sure.
You want to take it away?
Can do, and a little bit more than that, so forgive me. I'm going to keep this, again, as brief as I can. This is something that was brought up to me last fall. I got an email from a very nice lady who got a parking ticket on a trailer in her driveway, and that sounded weird to me, so I investigated. It sounded weird to her too. Turns out that that had come from the inspections department, and that's a thing we do, and I understand why. Now, this is debating what inspections does, but that got the whole thing on my radar, and I got looking into, so See Click Fix, everybody knows what it is, right? People at home, there's an app, you can report things that you see, and that's helpful to inspections, and then they investigate it. From there, when things are investigated, they go to a website called Evolve Public, and that's the listings of the things that are investigated and the process that goes on with it. After I got the parking ticket on the trailer email, I began looking around that same neighborhood, and noticed that there was one house in particular that had been visited by inspections every month for a year, and there were things that I didn't expect to see on that website. We were there looking at tire pressure on cars, registration tags on things. The most, the one that stuck out most to me was they got not fined, but they got a notice that there was debris in the front yard that turned out to be a baby stroller when the inspector showed up. So, things like that happen. I don't know how much they happen, and we're going to talk about it at some point, but what I learned in looking at it is that that app is now being used to sort of target people that other people don't like in their neighborhood, and that's not entirely fair, and that leads to lots of reports. Fitz can, may jump in whenever, but we went through some of the numbers, you guys all[1550.33] numbers. You guys all saw what came back. There are about two thousand claims like that that happen and get put on Evolve Public per year. Twenty-five percent, correct me if I'm wrong, come from See Click Fix. I have no idea how many may or not be real ones, good ones, bad ones. I just don't know. For me, the number is that that should probably never happen. We should work to not have that happen. So that's kind of why I wanted to bring it up. It also reads like it becomes a lot of work for inspectors. I'm sure it's not any fun for an inspector to go out and check the title on a car. That's just, that's just not what they do. They're there for safety and for beautification of neighborhoods. So that got me concerned and gave me pause because I think we spend a lot of money filing reports on things that may or may not be benefiting all of us. Secondary to that, in talking to Fitz, and again, correct me if I'm wrong later, but thirty-five percent of those two thousand claims come from when we're out looking at See Click Fix things. So when inspectors are out, they find other things at those same properties, they file another report, and it becomes a cyclical thing where we're just doing a lot of work because we're there to investigate something that may or may not need to be investigated in the first place. Similar to that, I got an email two weeks ago from someone who had lead pipes replaced in their property, which is what we want them to do. There's a program for it. They called inspections Department to get their final electrical inspection done for the grounding on the new pipes. What they got when the inspector showed up was a write-up for a bad handrail in the basement. That's not how I expect things to work. And if that was me, I probably wouldn't call again. So that just gives me more pause. And if we're going out to investigate somebody that's tattling on their neighbor, and then we're finding something that may or may not be important to public safety, if we're down a rabbit hole of things that shouldn't happen. So how we fix it, I have no idea. I know that Kelly is addressing some already. The code audit will help with some of that thing because some of it is culture and some of it is we shouldn't require our inspectors who have an awfully hard job already to go out and look at things that don't involve them or don't involve us and don't make our city better necessarily. But I, in looking at what else See Click Fix does in other cities, there are cities that treat that differently. Ours is, and some people will correct me in a minute, but as I understand it, ours is monitored all the time. And when a claim comes into inspections, they are required to go out and look at it no matter what it is. So my first suggestion, which is why we're discussing things, would be to change that format a little bit and say, look, if this is not in your purview, if it's not immediate safety issue, if it's not immediate beautification issue, then maybe our inspectors just don't have to go. And there's a different way to mitigate some of the paperwork that comes with the first report, then the letter, then the follow-up seven days later, then the photos, then the submitting to a website because it all just winds up piling up. So I'm interested in your thoughts. That's why I brought this up. It's not up to me. But that was one thing that really gave me pause, and I'm happy to just finally get a chance to talk about it. It's a long start.
Thank you for keeping it short.
Ish.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you bringing this up. This is something that I know in my community tour, community development tour, Kelly and I talked a little bit about See Click Fix. I think probably we do live in a reality where sometimes I have great neighbors. I like all my neighbors, if you're watching. But there are times when someone's gonna not like their neighbor, and they are going to target them in some way. And whether they do that on See Click Fix or they pick up the phone and call, I think that we're, we as a city are gonna have to look into it. And so I don't think this is a See Click Fix issue as much as it is how do we adjust our culture. I think your point about the audit being helpful is a really good one. I think that they're gonna look at See Click Fix. They're gonna say, here's how you can, you know, mitigate the use of time for inspectors so they can do something more beneficial. We've had a housing workshop before this meeting, and we know the inspectors need to go out and inspect brand-new homes that we're gonna be putting in the ground. That's a better use of their time than some of these things. I agree with you.
Yep.
Something that, that I'll just mention that Kelly and I talked about, Jacob actually was at my community tour with community development, too. I think the job of our city and of our inspectors in particular is to make sure that our citizens are safe. And so I think probably you can walk into any home in any community, and you can identify something that does not adhere perfectly with the code of that community. And I think if our culture shifts from, and this is all anecdotal, so I don't know if this, what the culture is, but shifts from a gotcha moment to is your home safe, I think that's gonna be better for everybody, not just for the people that are asking for the inspections Department to come into their home to look at something, but also for developers that are wanting to do business in Oshkosh. They're gonna feel like, oh, Oshkosh is a great place, an easy place to do business. And I know that's something we're really working on. I think that the, we're taking lots of steps. I'm not gonna say the first step is this audit. I think that's gonna be helpful. And so See Click Fix, I think, is a misnomer on the agenda. I think probably correcting the culture or the perception of our culture is gonna go a long way.
To, to that point, not to jump in, but one of the comments I heard most talking to people about, about this is they prefer it to feel educational and not punitive. And at times, it feels punitive.
All right. Councilmember Flohm?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think kind of my views of this are a mix of both of what's been previous and I have some thoughts of my own. Firstly, one of the chief things that I'm concerned about is mission creep. Our inspectors have a lot on their plate, and their number one priority is making sure that things are safe. And so to Councilman, Councilmember Larson's anecdotal points of view, that's something that I'd be concerned about as well. Using a lot of inspectors' time for things that they may not be initially called out for is, in my opinion, not the best use of staff time. The other thing, though, is that no matter what software we use, no matter what vendor we use, I think See Click Fix as a software is fine. No matter what we use, people are still going to try and use that in one way or another. There, if there's going to be a system out there where people can report things, there's always the potential for somebody to abuse it. That being said, though, I like the idea of potentially, I know Councilmember Larson and I talked about this, potentially limiting the hours. That's some things that some of the municipalities do. And the ability for city staff to sort through these and kind of stick to the core mission instead of the mission creep that we've been seeing with this. So for me, it's, again, it's not necessarily a See Click Fix software issue. It's the way that it's interpreted. And I think this code audit is gonna be very helpful for a potential culture shift in the way that we evaluate these types of complaints, kind of sorting out, okay, what may be a personal vendetta from neighbor A to neighbor B versus a genuine inspections concern that jeopardizes resident safety. So that's what I said on the issue. I think it's, I would like to give Councilmember Larson credit for bringing this up. And I think we have some work we can do on this, and we can make it a more efficient system for everybody involved.
Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Couple resolutions previous, we just passed Resolution twenty-five sixty to spend just shy a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from a professional consulting group to inspect the inspector's office. I think this would be very apropos for them to look at this, not only the software or whatever the program is, but to analyze, you know, what gets called in, how it gets analyzed, how, you know, is it, is it worth the time? Is it worth the inspector's time? So I guess in short, I think this would be one of the things that I would love to see that group take a look at it and give their professional opinion. Thank you.
Agreed. I'm just gonna say a couple real quick things. I've, Councilmember Larson and I have chatted a bit about this, and I agree with them that, that we need to find the balance here because there has to be a way to report serious safety concerns or for a renter to be able to report things anonymously without fear of retribution. There has to be that system. And See Click Fix does provide that. And I also agree that it also provides the possibility for abuse and misuse. And that's gonna be, like Councilmember Flohm said, almost any system that we get. So I don't have the solution, and I'm excited for the possibilities to see how we can use this software best as a communication tool. I do want to say, just, you know, since we're, we're talking about our inspector department, I had a back deck built by somebody who came in, and he built it wrong, and he was gone before I could get it fixed. And the inspection department was amazing to work with for me. And this was before I was elected on city council. I'll put that on record as well. They're very, I didn't get a single ticket from it being out of compliance. They came in, told me what was wrong and what I needed to do to, to take the steps to get it fixed. They couldn't come out there and fix it for me, obviously. But I really appreciated the time that they took. And that's the experience that I want every person to have when they call our inspections Department. Like Councilmember Larson said, you know, if you call them for one thing and you come up, you get a ticket when you get it, you're not gonna repeat that behavior. And that's just not something that we want. We really do want our inspection department to be a, an educational arm enforcement as a last resort. That shouldn't be, you know, their, their primary drive, and I don't think it is. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. I don't, do you want any action on it before we get the...
Not one bit. I mean, the timing with the audit was absolutely perfect. I guess my, my last question, if, if there was anything we could do in the interim, Fitz, can you confirm, because I, in talking to other department heads about this as well, some departments can say, no, we're not gonna do that, but inspections always has to investigate everything that comes to them. Because that's the, the paperwork part of it still concerns me a little bit. And I understand everything everybody's saying, but I would love to take work away from them that they don't want to do. Because I presume that they don't want to go check the registration tag on Jacob's CRV. I mean, they just, that's not their job. But they have to if somebody says they should, right?
I'll do that for him.
I appreciate Kelly coming up. But before she speaks, if you just allow me just a couple minutes, I, I want to thank the council for all the kind words about inspections and also, you know, their understanding of the difficult circumstances that inspectors are placed under. It's not really only inspections, but, you know, sometimes city staff are used to resolve disputes between neighbors because they just don't talk to each other anymore. And I think the fact that council members, you know, illustrated that to folks that are watching or listening tonight is tremendous. I think, you know, staff take great pride in what they do. They clearly do what they do because they want to help people. And, and the fact that you acknowledge that and, and made that known to other citizens and really asked for their assistance and maybe talking to their neighbor about something that's bothering them rather than using staff to do that for them, that's great. So thank you for that. And in regard to what staff can and can't do, you know, we talked a little bit about liability earlier today. We certainly wouldn't want to have a circumstance where we didn't act upon something, and it was mentioned by council members tonight, too, where an unsafe condition maybe was in play, and then something happened to one of our citizens. Because that's something we certainly take very seriously, too. But I'll allow Kelly to provide some additional comments because I know she works very closely with staff on these issues, especially inspections. And I know that she is working very hard to try to help them do their job better for everybody concerned. So.
Thank you. You're all correct, and I really do appreciate the feedback. You know, staff is out there. We're following up in complaints. We treat everybody equally. So we treat, treat every complaint equally. With that, I do hope that the code audit Matrix Consulting Group will take a look and, you know, and part of this will be a discussion with council. What do you want us to investigate? If it's something, a piece of, you know, a construction piece of a roof laying, you know, behind a garage, you know, is that something that we really need to go for? Or is it something, you know, that we can just maybe talk with the owner and say, hey, could you clean it up? So those are some different options that I think we really hope to get from the Matrix Consulting Group. But we really do take lead from the council. And if council says, we don't want you, you know, investigating if there's a expired, you know, license plate, or there's somebody that has a flat tire, or if there's some debris in the front yard, those are things that, we need to hear that feedback from council. Because staff, you know, we take direction right from council. So I do hope that the Matrix Consulting Group will help with that and provide guidance to all of our staff members so we can react accordingly.
Goodbye me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right. Next topic is process to place items on the council agenda. Being a couple people short here, and I know we're very much looking forward to our new city manager coming soon. But I don't want to just hang out there if it doesn't need to. If I may, I just want to read real quick from the January seventeenth newsletter that Fitzpatrick sent to us because I think from the last couple meetings, it seems like general consensus is that any one member should be able to put an item into discussion without having, without having a second approval or having any staff time devoted to it. Do I understand that at least correct? Okay. So I thought interim city manager Fitzpatrick did a really good job of summarizing it, that requested items will be placed under discussion and direction to city manager section of the agenda where they can be discussed by council. If an, if an individual from the public wishes to make a statement about an item in this section, they have the ability to do so, just as if they were for any other item. If during the course of discussion, a counselor wishes to make a motion for action on the item to be discussed, to direct city staff to draft an ordinance, for example, they have the ability to do so. In the past, the city manager has also at times simply indicated that based on feedback, that staff would proceed in a specific manner without a formal vote. That'd be the, the nodding heads, you know, where we're all obviously in agreement. I really like this procedure. I think that gives us a very good first step, and it gives us a very good second step. But if anybody wants to make a comment on that, obviously, we, we have the time here. And if we want to resolve this tonight, I mean, we can definitely do that as well. But I, I'll open it up to the floor. Councilmember Flohm, then Larson?
Thank you. And Deputy City Manager Fitzpatrick, I appreciate you laying this out in your newsletter. I think it was very informative. Just a couple of things that I have in regards to action items and just providing some context. In other governing bodies, the executive does not have a, I guess, essentially a veto power for what gets on versus what doesn't get on the agenda for an action item. The governor doesn't dictate that process. He can call a special session, but it's ultimately up to legislative leadership about what gets voted on on the floor versus what doesn't. At the county level, the county executive doesn't have any say on what gets on the agenda versus what doesn't. If a member of the county board wants to put something on the agenda, they have the right to do that. These bodies govern themselves differently. Same thing with the federal level. There's a whole rules process to get something onto the floor, but that's not a process that involves the executive or operations. That is simply the legislative function. The only thing that council has direct control over in city government is council. That's it. And so if council wants to clarify some rules for action items specifically, so if I want to bring a resolution forward or an ordinance forward, I think it would be my right to do so. However, council could decide, do I need a cosponsor? Do I need two cosponsors? Then we kind of get into a little bit of a gray area with walking quorum rules. But I think it is in the purview of members of council if they want to bring action items forward. If that means that they need a cosponsor, if that means that on the first reading, it initially goes to a committee and then comes back to council for a committee to do its due diligence work on it, I think that's also germane. However, I think if a member of council wants to bring forward an action item, they should be allowed to do so. And then council can decide how it wants to proceed with that, whether it requires a higher bar than just one member of council, whether it requires a committee referral, or it will just straight up take the vote. I think this is kind of a hole in our way that we set agenda items. I think it's an inconsistency to a degree. So that will be, that will be my two cents on this. I do think that, you know, discussion items, that's pretty straightforward in itself. But if I'm gonna bring forward an action item, it's on me to do the due diligence, to do the research, to have that done. And if I look like an idiot, I look like an idiot. But at the same time, I think it's up to council to decide how it wants to proceed on this without involving from city staff or from the city manager for action items specifically. And if council says that they want some staff input on this, then it can be referred to a committee. We have a committee process. I think we should use it more, particularly for action items that originate from members of council. So those are my thoughts on that matter. I know that we're probably not gonna get anything done on this in terms of a concrete solution tonight because we're missing two members, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Councilmember Larson?
I'm, I'm hoping to wrap this up tonight. It's been on the last six agendas. So I, I mean, I'm respectful of the fact, fact that people aren't here also, but I don't think this is that difficult. Jacob, I like everything you're saying. To me, it's simpler. I mean, we talked about whether I like rules or don't like rules. I typically like rules. But that's even more rules than I like. I'm hoping to see, I mean, it's great that we can add something to discussion and discuss it as we just did. That worked out just like I hoped it would, which was awesome. My hopes are that some action can follow more quickly than it does. I know that the code audit thing took a while to get done, and that's great. I'm not gonna beg on the fact that it took almost a year, but it took almost a year. That was a while. So I'd like to see a system where anybody can bring something here to discuss. And if action is wanted thereafter, if one of the person says, let's move forward with something, then there's something. And we, then we can define what that is. DJ, you said you like gray area last time. That's plenty of gray area still, right? Maybe, maybe too, too little. I'm not putting you on the spot. Go ahead. Oh, yeah, wait, next time. But I'm just hoping we can find some kind of way to, to define what happens next because we oftentimes get to that point, and then we don't know what to do, and then nothing happens.
Councilmember Nichols?
So I, I do like the gray area. I don't think it's ever gonna be black and white because to Jacob's point, we are a self-governing body to an extent, as I look at Lynn, so that she doesn't shoot me for saying that. But to an extent, we are self-governing. So we can always change the rules whenever we want. So it's, everything's always gray is kind of what I think. And I like the flexibility, like I said last time. So that's in response to you. But in terms of, of what I think we're talking about, which is Matt's process that he placed on, on the agenda today, I'm very supportive of it. I, I think that the fact that the city manager is gonna have input and some level of control, but there's an alternative if the city manager does not support the agenda item, I think that saves all of his time. That saves staff time, saves taxpayers' dollars because it saves staff time. I think that's a good thing. I think that the mayor, having some input into whether or not that agenda item should, should be there or not is a positive. I would, I'm excited that, that Matt wants that and to do that because it sounds, something really weird would have to happen for Matt to not be reelected. Because he's the only one running. And so he's gonna be around, so I'm glad he wants to do that. I hope he wants to do that with, like, with policymaking and with the budgeting process as well. I think that the, the mayor should, should be very close to those things. I think the mayor is a different job than what we all have. And so I'm excited about what he, what his policy is. And I think that if we can resolve it tonight, we do resolve it tonight. We go with Matt's process. And if we don't like it, we change it.
All right. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, you know, as I stated before, I go back to many, many years ago, that my partners, Mr. Fitzpatrick and city attorney, were here when I first got on. And, you know, I'm just, I remember back then, it was if council member wanted to put something on, they, they called the city manager, they called the city attorney, they called the city clerk and said, here's what I want to do. Write it out. And I don't remember, guys, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't ever remember any misuse of that. I don't remember any problems with that. I don't remember a lot of things coming forward with that process. Where this spun out, I have no idea. When I got back on, I just thought, that's the process is a council member just called, and that's how you get something on. And, and I think the, the other thing we need to understand is, this isn't so much, if I want to bring something forward, I have an idea. To be honest with you, a lot of the ideas that I have, they're not mine. I got from somewhere else. So we can do the seven nodding head thing up here, but that freezes out the public. It's not on the agenda. We, in order to really allow the public to come forward and speak to things, it needs to be on the agenda. And again, we're the elected body here. The staff time, I, I don't want to waste any staff time. I hope to God I've never done that. But the staff time is here to be used to relate to city issues. Sometimes they're good and sometimes they're bad. Maybe the staff feels that their time isn't being used correctly. And that, I get that. That's fine. But that's how it works. And so for me, it's, if a staff, if a council member wants to put something on the agenda, I would say, let's do it the way we used to do it. My guess is I don't have enough support for that. Councilmember Flohm and Larson talked about, what do you, the cosponsor, whatever comes forward, the idea gets presented to the council. And if I bring something forward and councilmember Flohm says, hey, that sounds like a great idea, it's done. Contact the staff, and it gets crafted however it needs to be legally, and that's done. I, I think we're just putting way too much thought into this, and we're kind of losing focus of, of the residents. Once again, we're losing focus of the residents because a lot of these ideas, I'm just, as a council member, I consider myself just as a conduit to getting things done. I'm elected, but to be honest with you, the citizens, most of them are smarter than I am. So that's how I get the ideas. So that, that's kind of my thought process.
Councilmember Flohm?
Yes. I give a lot of different options. But the core of the point I'm trying to make is there should be just a simpler, clearer shot if a member wants to get an action item on the agenda. And if the bulk of the council present wants to decide that tonight, we should do that tonight. My initial thoughts were we would wait until we have a full, full membership here. But the fact is that hasn't really happened in the past few meetings, and I'm kind of sick of discussing this. of discussing this, so we should probably go ahead and get moving on this. I do kind of sit in the camp with Mr. Esslinger. I think it's, you know, a member of council has the right to, to bring something forward. I also do understand the fact that the chair of the body does have a lot of authority in the way that agendas are set, in the way that things come to the floor versus the way that things don't come to the floor. So, I'm in between those two. I am very sympathetic to the fact that a member of council could just go ahead and say, hey, this is something I want to put on. But I will leave that up to other open discussion, because I just think the process needs to be a bit simpler, despite me giving tons of different alternatives.
Councilmember Larson.
I have a clarifying question. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading this wrong. On mayor's flowchart presented in the agenda item, is that for any agenda item? Is that for the discussion, or is that for the secondary part of action? Or whatever, whatever the next part is?
My understanding is that that was a rough draft, that is not, that has not been updated since the last discussion we had while the mayor was here.
Well, it makes perfect sense if we're using that as the method to become actionable in any way, shape, or form. Then I'm all for what Matt's presenting here. If we can, if we're presupposing that by saying, like we just did, anybody can put anything on the discussion portion, if this is what it takes to make something one step more than that in any way, shape, or form actionable, then this sounds great to me. That's where I was hoping we'd wind up.
So, for clarification, that idea is that any member at any time can request to have something on the agenda under discussion with no staff time dedicated. Now, I'm just going to, for full transparency, I reached out to deputy, or soon-to-be-not-interim city manager, and I said, hey, I want this on the discussion item. And he said to me, he goes, that's great. I think it would work better at this because, and I said, you know what? You're right. No problem. You know, he didn't violate me. It was just a discussion that we had. So, that part, I think there is unanimous consent on, that any item can go into the discussion. I think it's just tweaking when it gets an actual action item or a resolution or an ordinance, and in the flowchart, it has two possible paths, and I want to add a third for consideration. The first one is, city manager is supportive of the plan. It automatically, obviously, it's their staff, it's going to be her staff soon to direct, and she can do that. If the city manager is not supportive of the plan, it would be the council member, so after the discussion, has to have a, sorry, obtains a supportive, a second council member consistent with open meetings laws. Those two would then have a discussion with the city manager, and so they would be sponsoring it, kind of overruling a little bit what it sounds like from the city manager to get that action item done and brought back before the full council. The third, which we haven't talked about but already exists, is that it goes through the committees and boards, like you've already said. I have an item coming up that I am taking to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee first, because I think it's important to have the discussion there. Once we have the discussion, then it can be recommended or not recommended to council. But I think that, you know, there is an avenue there where a lot of action items come through that way as well. I, I'm comfortable with that. It, you know, I, that is what I would like to see, and it seems kind of consistent with what everybody has been asking for. So, absent of more discussion, I'm going to make a motion to solidify that.
I guess a question I would just have before we do that would be, if in the discussion item, there is some form of draft document of what a policy would look like, would that be acceptable within the?
I think that would be upon the council member sponsoring it, bringing it forward, to have their language and their, their background if they want to bring it forward, with, without utilizing legal or, you know, because that would be my input.
Essentially, it would be a pre-reading.
Correct. Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, so I just, if anyone is looking at the flowchart that's posted, the text that's actually above the flowchart is a little bit different than what's in the flowchart, and so, we need to clarify those things, and so I think we need an updated flowchart before we do anything. Councilmember Bulo, Deputy Mayor, whatever your title is, Carl, has said that we should add a third column, and so, I support that. I just want to speak quickly to what council member Flom said about drafting a policy or a resolution. I am a lawyer, and I don't want to present anything to this body without Lynn looking at it first.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so, I think that keeps us all safe, that keeps the city out of litigation, and I think that we pay staff, probably not as much as they deserve, but we pay them money to do this and to look at things and to tell us what they think. And I'm, I'm going to disagree with staff all the time. I mean, I probably got on, I know I got on Kelly's nerves today, I had to have, emailing about something else. But that's the job. And so, I heard someone say at one point, it was an elected person, say that they are not the government. Being elected doesn't make you the government. Being elected makes you the person that has, is able to set policy so the government can do its work. And so, I want to go to the government and say, here's what I think we should do. Is that feasible? If they say, yes, that's feasible, let's move forward with it. If they say, no, that's not feasible, that's very different than saying, I don't like it. And so, I think the question to the new city manager needs to be, is this feasible? Does this make sense? And if they say, yes, it's feasible, but it doesn't make sense, then that's when we should go to the support of a second council member, to say we disagree. But I just rambled a lot. I just, I don't want us to be in the position of producing our own policies up here and pushing them out to the world and really confusing people in a, in a time where politics at the state level and at the federal level are very confusing. I think we can make local politics a little bit easier.
And to your point, I personally wouldn't draft something and bring it here and say, I just didn't run it by an attorney and then went on. I think that's, that's before prior planning for me as a member of council. Now, if somebody wants to consult with Lynn, and again, then we're kind of moving into the fact where we don't want to take up staff time, that's something else. But I guess just essentially outlining your ideas on paper, so that other council members and the public can see them is kind of more where I'm trying to go towards in terms of draft. I'm not, if I didn't clarify, I apologize. In terms of, instead of full legal draft, that's something, somebody would vote on, which I'm not an attorney, and I don't feel like I am the best at drafting things. So, essentially, just putting pens and paper on an idea that you have so that the public and other members of council can see that within a discussion item is more of where I'm trying to go with this.
Sure. Councilmember, or, sorry. Mr. Fitzpatrick, did you have something before Larson or?
Go ahead. Mine's withdrawn. I was going to say the same thing councilor Nichols said in a less eloquent way, so continue on.
Well, I was just going to say, I really like the way that, not that I didn't like what everybody else said, but I really like the way that councilmember Nichols framed it. I think for people that don't work in the jobs that you are as council members or staff, they may think that, that we're not on the same team, so to speak. I think they may think that, you know, council members are at odds with staff, and that's really not the case. I mean, we're here to support the council members. We're here to support the community. We report to the city manager, and the city manager helps manage that process because he's the CEO. He knows what people's workloads are. People get sick, just like any other workplace, or have things that go on in their family and they're unavailable. So, that person manages all those things, and there's no way that elected officials can know all those things. So, having the city manager in that process, having Rebecca in that process going forward, I think is vitally important. And I think council wants to serve, obviously, they report to the city manager, but I think Kelly said it tonight, they want to serve the council. They understand that their council members are elected by the people. So, I think, and we had a lengthy discussion, not to bring up any bad feelings last time, you know, about council members trying to, wanting to go forward and do something for the public, and I think everybody here recognized that it was well-intended. But I think the outcome that I think we can take that's a positive from that is that the council itself, they all, you all are individuals, you all have your own ideas, and you bring something to the table, but in order to accomplish things, you have to act as a body. And when you're going to be working with the new city manager, when Rebecca's here, she wants to hear from all of you as a group. So, even though each one of you might have individual ideas, in order for us to accomplish things, you know, as a city of Ashkay team, we're going to have to do it as a group, you as council, and then council and staff to do it together. And I think that's what, that's what staff works for, that's why they work here 10, 20 years, hopefully, because they want to make this community better. I know that all the council members here certainly believe that. Some of them even, you know, sign up for additional tours of duty, you know. I don't know if that's the wisest thing to do, but I don't think you can question the commitment and the desire to help this community. And I think all I would ask is when we, when we arrive at a process, and by the way, Rebecca has some additional ideas for this, too, so I hope you would consider those, that we do it in a way where we just have that spirit of, we're just trying to do this the best way we can for the community. And it's not, hey, this is my idea, not staff's, or staff wants to control this. That's certainly not the case. That's not been my experience working with staff. And if that's some of the feeling that you get from the citizenry, it's misplaced. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. So, it sounds like we likely are not going to have a resolution to this tonight, which is okay, because that gives us time to, to bring the new city manager in and hopefully get an updated version of the flowchart and get that all sussed out, and that way, we can all be on this exact same page on all the different avenues. Any other discussion on this item? All right. Moving forward to future agenda items, meetings, workshops, council, council member announcements and statements. Otherwise, we'll move into the curtain call for Assistant, Assistant City Manager Fitzpatrick in this role.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. There's some items on the city manager announcements and statements that are cooperative purchases, there's several vehicles, there's a professional services agreement. One item that I think is important to note is in-person absentee voting, and I'll just yield the floor to the city clerk, so she can just speak about that real briefly.
Well, we had, there should be a, yeah, some dates. This is our last week. We are there, we were there a little bit later yesterday. It is kind of slow, it's a primary, but we are going forward, and we are there through Thursday till 4:30 and Friday till 5:00, so it's your opportunity to in-person absentee vote.
Just want to say thank you for being there on Saturday. I think I was there maybe like five minutes before it closed. I was one of the four or five people who voted that day early.
Yep.
The weather isn't great right now, it's not going to improve anytime soon, so, you know, for what you guys are doing, this is not an easy job, and it's even worse in tougher weather. So, thanks for what you guys are getting forward with.
So, in addition to that, there's also an item on scheduling intergovernmental meeting between council and state representatives. I know I referred to that earlier, and one thing that I, I have to do is I just apologize, I think, to the group, because when I was talking about history, I could have talked about how this has been managed in the past, and I think it would have been a more efficient way to, to express my thoughts on the subject last time, but I didn't think of it. And so, in a little, as a matter of reflection, I just thought about, you know, what we have done when these intergovernmental meetings have taken place in the past, and really, we've handled them administratively through the city manager's office. You know, Diane, when she was in that capacity, working with city manager Roloff, helped manage those. And just to educate the council members, the way that it has worked in the past is, the executive assistants to the city managers contacted the council members, tried to get an idea what their availability was in the schedules, has also contacted legislators. Typically, they're more apt to be available after the governor's budget is put in place, so that's typically a better time. Is, you know, work back and forth with, with all, everybody involved, you know, asked for agenda items, tried to pair those agenda items down in a way where it would fit within a 90-minute timeframe. That's typically what the legislators and council members have felt comfortable with, with doing. And then, when we come up with that, when we have it in a, in a manner where we can present it to council and say, hey, this is what we have, we would schedule it out, we'd put it on a future, future meeting, you know, as we do here under, you know, item, item 26 on our current agenda, and then we just say, hey, we've worked out this date, it appears to work for everybody involved, these are the agenda items, is everybody okay with that? In advance, so we have time if you have input or you want to tweak it. And then that way, we can just take care of it for you. It's one less thing you have to worry about. So, I would suggest that to the council. We're happy to do that for you, if that's something you're comfortable with.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take care of it. That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
All right. Anything else from any council member? Take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.